To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Reba Rollcall?
Mr. Benomo?
Here.
Mr. Chapman?
Here.
Mr. Fume?
Here.
Mrs. Kay?
Here.
Mr. John? Mr. Maholik?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mrs. Garcella?
Here.
Mr. Zola?
Here.
Okay, we have several executive sessions that were held, January 9th for personnel negotiations, January 17th personnel, January 19th personnel, January 26th personnel, tax appeals, and legal matters. Tonight, there are no public recognitions. Mr. Zola, are there any public comments directed at agenda items?
Number, Marcy Yanick, and number 54.
I'm sorry, one, one extra thing is, number 58 is going to be removed from tonight's agenda.
Good evening.
Go ahead.
I'm Marcy Yanick from Hazel Township. Hello, board, it's good to be back. I'm addressing number 54, which is the resignation of Sharon Weaver, the practical nursing instructor, effective January 19th. First, I want to commend Sharon Weaver for her service to the nursing profession. And I also want to address that it's been noted in the Standard Speaker newspaper last week that this program should be scrutinized for viability. Some of the school board members think that this profession shouldn't be viable. So I just want to give a couple of facts. Since the program started, the 64th class graduated last Friday night. There has been 1,084 men and women that have gone through this program that are of great service to our area. As to the viability, some facts for our area. In our area, there are 13 personal care homes that hire LPNs. There are 17 nursing homes in a 30-mile radius that hire LPNs. And there are 14 private duty agencies that give nursing care to the elderly, sickly children in their homes. If this program does not exist anymore, where are these men and women going to learn the skills and get their LPN license to serve our area? Comments were made also that LPNs are replacing RNs in today's healthcare world. Yes, LPNs can do some of the roles, but not all the roles that RNs do. But that doesn't mean that the LPN do not serve their role in today's healthcare setting. If the right person is hired for this position, this program can be, be remained viable for many years to come to serve the healthcare needs of our, not only aging population, but all of our sick children in their homes that are being taken care of, and in the homes of our school buildings, because LPNs serve those children. LPNs are also hired by many of our physician practices in our area. Just giving you all areas, so I do not believe that this is a faltering program, and it is very worthwhile, and should be considered by the board to stay in existence. Thank you. One thing I wanted to mention that, you know, getting back to the Department of Health of Pennsylvania, there's more, many regs and guidelines that fall into place when you're thinking about promoting the program under provisional status, and yes, stopping the program, it can't just stop. So I am here so that you all will review this with great intent, so that you can have the needs of our community in mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to just comment, because I was the board member that brought it up. So last year, I was on the committee, the Career Center Committee, and we looked at programs throughout the committee, throughout the Career Center, and how they were helping the students of our area. What, what programs might, you know, be beneficial to our area. You know, there's a lot of trades right now that are clamoring, they need, they need, you know, skilled people, or, or at least people that have a, an entry-level education to be able to come to work for them, and it's very difficult to find plumbers, masons, electricians, just a lot of different ones. I'm a big supporter of nursing. My concern was, was the program viable the way it was being run here at the Career Center? Starting before I got elected on the board, there were articles in the Standard Speaker as well saying that the state was looking at the program, and the state found a number of different violations, if you want to call them that, or whatever it was, provisions, that they felt needed to be corrected. That, that wasn't me saying that, the state came in and actually sent a letter afterwards saying, "You need to get this act together here," basically.
I'd like to comment on that.
Well, can I, let me, let me just finish while my train of thought is here. When, with that information, and then when I read that Sharon was deciding to leave, I, I just simply said at that point, brought it up at a meeting, "Maybe this is the opportunity to, at this point, evaluate, reevaluate the program." And, and that's what, that's how it started. No one was throwing hand grenades anywhere. The program lost money last year, over $50,000. That's, that is fact, okay? So when I look at that, and, and that was just one year I look back. So I didn't look back the year before, the year before. With that in mind, not having a, a person to run it, the program lost money, my, my only concern was, can we better use that space? Can we better use the money that we lost last year on high school students? That's all. Obviously, the board didn't agree, because it's, it's gone forward that the class is in, no one wants to make it. When I spoke to Mrs. Herman, and I don't know if she's here or not, but when I spoke to Mrs. Herman, prior to bringing it to the meeting, she agreed that the program probably won't survive at this point. They're having a very difficult time getting someone in there. I just thought- I didn't see her. I'm sorry?
I was just seeing if Mrs. Herman was here.
Yeah, I, if she's here, she's welcome to stand up. So my whole thing was, you know, before you get a whole class in there of new students, are we going to be able to provide what we promised when we took their money? And is it the best use of the money? The board decided that they're going to let this class go through, I'm fine with that. But we need to question things as board members so that everyone has an opportunity to think about what we're doing, what direction is this district going in. That program, under the, the leadership from the beginning, and, and I, I was sitting in a restaurant a few months ago, and, and one of the people that ran that program from the beginning came in, sat down right next to me, and for 30 minutes, Mrs. Benomo talked to me about, you know, the program, and, and how wonderful it was, and this and that, but also expressed a lot of concern of things that were going on now. So there's two sides to every coin. I'm not, I'm not knocking nurses, I, I think you guys do a fantastic job, I think it's a, I do believe, though, that our local hospital does not hire LPNs, if I'm, if I'm correct?
As of now, no.
Okay.
They are hiring-
That's all I said that night.
And Mrs. Herman's here now, so she can-
Yeah. So that's all I said that night, was that I, that, that in the area, demand was not as great. So that's where we were at.
Well, I just gave you examples in the area how the demand is great.
Right.
And you quoted that, that the program is under scrutiny. All nursing programs are under scrutiny. There's guidelines with the Department of Health that have to be conditioned every year, year after year. The BSN programs in our area, Wilkes, Mississauga, Bloomsburg, are always under scrutiny and fall out, and have to make amendments every year because of the changing in healthcare in our country right now. That's the fact.
And they're, and they are in the business of secondary education, right? I mean, they're, Penn State has a, a practical nurse program, and I'm sure there's a few other ones. Carden Lehigh has a, a practical nursing program. There are programs that do it. So my concern was just, are we using our dollars, and are we using the space for our high school students? That, that I think is our main mission, right? Having, making sure that our high school students have what we need. And I know that the space is limited right now. So it's done, it's over with, the class is in, it's moving on. But I defend the right of a board member, you, you sat here, to question, are we going in the right direction? Should we look at this? And I hope in a year and a half, 18 months, Mrs. Herman has great news to say that, hey, we found a person who's running the program, fantastic. But this is the kind of stuff that happens, that you sat here-
I know.
This is what happens. Phone calls are made, people are, da, 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 and before you know it, you're trying, you're trying to make this, and make that, you're doing it, make us look like bad guys. It wasn't.
No, that was my intent.
It was just for the purpose of-
I just wanted to show how LPNs are still needed in our area.
I just have two quick comments. One is, this is a program that is for adults, that is run during the day, I do understand that. However, there are a lot of our own students who go right into that program, so it is a benefit for them. And if this program is, is losing money, this is the first time we've heard of that, and we should not be losing any money, because we can charge whatever it takes to even just break even. So we need to look at that and, and raise the cost of tuition, because most of the time, the people coming into this class will have grants, or they're having, you know, their whole training paid for. So we will take a look at that. I do think it's a very viable program, though, and I think it is good for our kids.
Many of the students that just graduated on Friday were single working moms. And if they didn't have the opportunity, because their kids are in our district, they wouldn't have had an opportunity somewhere else to further the reg-
That's what I said the last time, and that is true.
Bernice is sitting in the audience, she ran a program that could not be beat.
Bernice, yes, you can. She didn't sign in, but thank you, Morphe.
Thank you for your time.
It's an agenda item, you could come up.
Thank you for the opportunity to be able to speak. But I can tell you, I'm not quite sure where you're getting your figures from, only because our students pay $13,000 tuition. And the last class, there were 30 students that started, and we graduated 22 of those 30 students. And each level that they completed at, they paid the tuition for that level, okay?
The numbers I got were directly from the business office. And I'm not throwing anyone under the bus, that's who handles the business of the district, the financial business.
But it's third, it's 14,000 dollars a student. Plus, they get $2,300 of federal funds through the Pennsylvania Department of Education, like you people get for, for secondary students. We get practical nursing dollars. So they put in 1,540 hours. We got last year $53,000 from the Pennsylvania Department of Education. So that being said, with $13,000 tuition, for 22 students that we completed at the full $14,000 amount, plus the other eight that were able, that we were able to get two, two ye, two semesters of tuition, I can't see how there was a loss in the program.
Over $50,000.
I don't, I, I did the budget.
Bernice, I, I could sit down with you. I, I provided the board with the numbers, I did meet with Lori at the Finance Committee meeting. So if you want to step up tomorrow, we could go over. It, it looked over the past 18 months, and I was able to reconcile to Lori's numbers moving forward. But, you know, looking at all the people that we had, we had some people in and out of there, and calculating all their costs.
The highest salary that was paid in the practical nursing department for this last class, and when I say a class, I'm not saying a year. I am calculating the figures over the 15-month period, which means that we pay a teacher, we pay one and a half salaries, and I calculated it on one and a half salaries, including, there were two full-time instruct, full to, two full-time people in the department, and calculated $33,000 in benefits. So I just can't see how there's a loss, because you, you took in almost 400, 300 and some thousand dollars. The highest paying teacher was 68, and the other teacher was $43,000 that was running the program. And the third teacher was a part-timer that you didn't pay any benefits for. We calculated everything else, and I came up with different figures than you did. And I'll be happy to sit down with you.
Bernice, all due respect to you, I love you, I think you did a fantastic job, you ran a great program. I just don't think, you know, I, things have happened or changed, or whatever the case may be.
There are lots of changes that occurred within the program.
And that's all it comes down to. We need to look at that and make sure that it's, it's always the best. And if it is, God bless. If not, then we should have the nerve, and we should have the guts to change what we have to change.
I would say for many, many, many years.
This program is still viable, it's still live.
It's still alive, that's what I'm saying. I, I've said that very clearly, Marie. The board has already decided, the class is in, the board has already decided to let it go for the next 18 months. And, and if it can't turn around, that the state recognizes the program as being what it needs to be, and we're not losing money, you won't hear from me again. I think that's fair, right?
Well, the other thing is that the article read that the program was under scrutiny. I don't, I don't know where that came from.
Bernice?
What is the program under scrutiny?
Does it have anything to do with, because my daughter went through the program, and by the way, and I talked to Vinnie about this, too.
Yes, absolutely.
I believe at this point it's still a viable program. And I don't even think he wanted to see it go away this 18 months because of the situation with the students already signing up. But when you, when you get through the 18-month program, you have to take that test to become an LPN certified, right? That's what I think is happening, and not enough students are either passing it on the first time, or the second time, or maybe not enough are taking it, I don't know. Maybe you could explain that?
I could explain that to you.
Yes.
The year for the State Board of Nursing is October 1st to September 30th. We actually had one class of 22 students that put us in this predicament. And it was because those 22 students who we cannot take by the hand and say, "You must, you must take those boards." Some of them waited one and a half years to take their test. And they don't care, the State Board of Nursing does not care if you have three students that take it within that timeframe. If three of them fail within, between October 1st and September 30th, you are given a 0% pass rate. And I even argued with the state, three students is not a cohort group, but they don't care. So the, the program that you say is under scrutiny, which I don't think is under scrutiny-
I don't say it, the state put it in a, in a letter.
No, well, it's not, the state-
And I don't think I use scrutiny, I think we, whatever the terminology was, they, they put it in a letter.
Okay, well, whatever.
I don't write for the newspaper, though, right?
Okay, the, the paper did say scrutiny. Well, I can tell you that we petitioned the board. The board is working very nicely with us to keep the program open, because if you think that it's only the practical nursing program in the Career Center, it's all practical nursing programs.
The only program that, that I was concerned about is the one that's here, because-
Right.
I'm elected to this board, and I'm not going to stop asking questions regardless of how many people bombard us.
I'm not asking you to do that.
I'm, I'm going to ask questions if I feel, if, if I see what doesn't seem correct to me, I think it's my responsibility to the taxpayer, to the students, to ask the questions.
And it is.
The sad part is, this is what goes on, and eventually, people stop asking questions, because this is what goes on.
I don't, I don't think you should ever stop asking questions, but then people want to give their own opinion. But thank you, Mrs. Platac, your time is up. But we, if you would work with Mr. Reba, and, you know, hopefully, we'll all work together and move the program forward, and we could come back after this class and say, you know, because we all work together, that this was a huge success.
Okay, I appreciate that.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Bernice.
Anyone else have an agenda item for public comment? Okay, then we're going to get to the meeting. Oh, sorry, treasurer report. First, we need to, sorry, lost my train of thought. Approve the board meeting minutes for the regular monthly board meeting. Roll call.
All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
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 Any opposed, ayes have it, motion passes.
Treasurer report for December.
So move, second.
Any questions?
Of approving the treasurer report, I'm sorry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, ayes have it, motion passes.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Kay. Moving on to the regular agenda now. Curriculum and instruction, approving items 1 through 11 with one motion.
Second.
Questions, comments? Roll call.
Numbers 1 through 11, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, ayes have it, motion passes.
Special ed, ESL and alternative ed, approve items 12 and 13.
So move, second.
Questions, comments? Roll call.
Numbers 12 and 13, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, ayes have it, motion passes.
Nutrition, approve items 14 and 15.
Questions, comments? Roll call.
Numbers 14 and 15, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, ayes have it, motion passes.
Transportation, number 16, recommend board approve the following contract.
Second.
Questions, comments? Roll call.
16, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, ayes have it, motion passes.
Security, 17.1, recommend board approve changing the status of Kayla Rattler from part-time security officer to security-
So move, second.
Questions, comments? Roll call.
17.1, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, motion passes.
17.2, recommend board approve the inclusion of-
Second.
Questions, comments? Roll call.
17.2, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, ayes have it, motion passes.
Student activities, approve items 18 through 22.
So move, second.
Questions, comments? Roll call.
Numbers 18 through 22, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, ayes have it, motion passes.
Number 23, recommend board approve the request to provide transportation.
Second.
Questions, comments?
This is going to, what, what grades are we transporting?
This is the high school, Mr.-
And I apologize, I was not here for the committee meeting. What, is this Monday through Friday, all year long?
This is for three days a week, two conditioning at Harmon Geist, just one way from the high school to Harmon Geist.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call.
23, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, ayes have it, motion passes.
Technology, approve items 24 through 28.
Second.
Questions, comments? Roll call.
Numbers 24 to 28, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, ayes have it, motion passes.
Facilities, number 29, recommend board approve the purchase.
Second.
I have a question. So we did, we did get the three quotes, correct?
Yes.
And from my understanding, we're going to be doing this work with our own people, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I just have one question about that, then. Is this something that the district can do in-house according to state regulations for school districts?
Ms. Morcase.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Roll call.
29, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, ayes have it, motion passes.
Finance, approve items 30 through 38.
So move, second.
Questions, comments? Roll call.
Number 30 to 38, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, ayes have it, motion passes.
39 bills.
So move, second.
Questions? Roll call.
39, A through E, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, ayes have it, motion passes.
Superintendent's agenda, approve items 40 through 50 with one motion.
So move, second.
Questions, comments? Roll call.
Numbers 40 through 50, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, ayes have it, motion passes.
Approve items 51 through 62 with one motion.
So move.
Number 58.
Excluding 58, thank you, Ms. Kay.
Questions, comments? Roll call.
I have a question.
Oh, sorry.
On number 62, recommend board require approval on all projects and purchases in the district at an amount of $2,500 or more after solicitation of at least three quotes. I'm not sure, do we, so what is the policy now?
We, we did this for the maintenance department only about a year ago. And that motion that passed pretty much specifically said maintenance. So this motion will require us to get quotes for 2,500 or more for all the departments across the district.
That's pretty much going to tie the hands of, of this district, it's a huge district. The state allows us up to what, 20,000?
10 to 19.
10 to 19?
I think it's 10 to 19.
I mean-
Well, we're doing it for maintenance. We're doing it for maintenance.
If we need to do it before the board approval, we would use that form. I think we used it once last year for maintenance, where we would need signatures from those four individuals listed there. And then the board would still approve it, but it would be after the fact approval.
Tony, how many project requests do you get from maintenance that would follow this policy? How many would you say, estimate?
Well, we just added this one for the pool heater this month. I'm guessing, probably on average, Andre, once a month? Once, once or twice a month, for maintenance.
But this is, I mean, where we go out and buy vehicles, at times at the state auction, for, we use them in different departments in the district. You wouldn't be able to do that. I mean, you would have to solicit quotes, right? I mean, to me, it just seems like it's really going to, at times, it's going to become cumbersome. I mean, the four signatures are needed for emergencies, right? Is that...
I mean, if we needed to do a project before the board vote, we would get the four signatures.
It sounds, though, that at that point, it's picking and choosing what projects want to be done and which ones don't. Which ones you're going to have to get quotes on, and others. It just seems like a lot of controls. All right, I don't know. Okay.
Mr. Reba, does it have to be signatures? Could it be email authorization from...
Yeah, we could email the form. We could email the form back and forth.
And how about, okay, and then on Mr. Zola's point of, we're going to an auction, and we're going to purchase a vehicle or something. I mean, could that in advance be...
An auction, and I would have to ask for the solicitor's advice on that because, one, it's a state auction, and there's state vehicles, and you're kind of at the market. You know, you're bidding on the car.
Yeah.
I would potentially, if in an auction situation, ask for an opinion potentially, as long as we stay under the state bid limit, we may be able to... I would hate to see us lose the auction part. I'm hoping we could get around it somehow. But it is a bid situation.
We usually do know when you're going to the auction.
Yeah, I mean, if we would get preapproval for the auction.
And that's what I'm saying. If these positions can get preapproval, and again, not necessarily in writing, but in authorization through email, or however you want to do that, because again, yeah, I wouldn't want this to limit the ability for a good deal to pass our hands because of a policy.
I don't want that either, but it's already in place for the maintenance department.
Yeah, no, I completely understand that. I'm just saying if we can...
I just don't understand why it's only in place for one department.
No, I'm fine with it. I just, again, to the point of, I don't want us to be able to miss a good deal because we're waiting.
I think Tony explained that, though. Tony, but although you did explain in the work session why it was set up for maintenance. Why is it just for maintenance?
There was a situation that was going on that some people were out there doing their own thing, and we were losing control of what was going on. So, I think the business office had decided to put a limit on, lower it from the state limit, so that we could have more control over things that were being purchased, and, you know, things that we could purchase and things that we shouldn't purchase, as far as it goes.
But are we saying that only happens in maintenance?
No, but I think that, there was a couple situations that had taken place that pretty much drove these guys to want to put that in place. I don't know if it happens with technology. I don't know if it happens with security. I don't know if it happens with anything else. But when it was in front of those guys, that's what they, that's what the board had decided that they wanted to do, put a limit of 2,500. Again, the state limit is 10,000 to 19,000, so... Do we ever go to that part of it? Could we ever go to the 10 to 19?
Well, that's what, again, the state is from 10.7 and up to 19.7. You need to get three quotes. Underneath 10.7, basically, you could just make the purchase. But we have our own process here of anything 10,000 or more required the board approve.
Yeah, I think these guys were doing it to protect themselves, too, because it was really getting out of control, I think. And they weren't feeling warm and fuzzy about it. So, it was a good thing for maintenance. I don't know, is it going to be a good thing for anything else?
This is a huge department, a district, to try to run like this. And the other issue I have with this one is that the emergency purchases, you know, I mean, we had instances last year where maintenance declared something an emergency, the water heater at Freeland turned out not to be an emergency. The first, the emergency call would have cost the district over $150,000. By slowing the process down and looking at it and going out to bid ended up costing us $18,000. So, you know, I just, the 1, 2, 3, and 4, you know, the rest of the board has no basically say in looking at some of that stuff. And we saved a lot of money last year by looking into problems. And this is taking it all away, so. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
I have some comments on, what are we, I lost track of what we're, what numbers are we at?
Mr. Chapman, we're on 51 through 65.
Well, I have a few names here to mention. I don't know if any of them are here tonight. But Cynthia Borcheck, Joshua Gibson, Patty Galloway, Melissa Willard, and Jason Williams. Is anybody, people that were hired tonight, or will be?
We didn't vote on it, yes.
Well, then I'll wait until we vote on it. Don't stand yet.
Don't stand up, yes.
But I do want you to stand after we vote on it.
I think everybody's okay. Jason, just hang out a couple minutes. We're not sure here, but...
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. Roll call.
Numbers 51 to 62, excluding 58. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
No on 62.
62, no.
Okay, now, we would like to recognize the people on this list that have been hired for the district tonight, if you could all stand.
And I'm sure we're getting, I think it was five good people here. I know two of them very well, Patty Galloway and Jason Williams. I've known Jason since he's a little kid. Comes from a very good family, and I'm sure he's going to do a great job as a vice principal. I believe it's going to be at the Valley. Am I correct? Or am I?
Correct.
And Patty, who I don't know quite as well, but I do know her. And after hearing her speak last week to us about this position, I think we're going to be in very good hands. So, congratulations on that. And to Melissa Willard, I don't believe she was here. Is she here? Melissa, it's about time. Congratulations, and I'm sure you're going to do well, too, along with the other people that were hired tonight.
Basketball teams, last year, concerning a lot of parents, calls were made. I received a number of phone calls, and nothing seemed to be, was falling to the side. Jason was assigned to go down. He took over a position of assistant, a coach, for one of the basketball teams last year, down at the Valley, or down at Drums? Yeah.
You're still a great guy, Jason.
That's all right.
Jason went down.
We hired the wrong person.
There was a little bullying going on between different teams in that. And my understanding was that Jason kind of resolved that issue in a day or so. It's not, I have to take my vote back, Jason.
Hey, if it wasn't him, Vinnie, maybe we don't want to...
No, I have to take my vote back. And Patty, your interview or talk the other night, you know, on my little list here, I have passionate, compassionate, you know, I mean, I think you're going to do a great job. I hope you're happy, and that's important.
Ms. Kay, I did have the opportunity to speak to all three individuals. And again, I've said before, what a delight and a pleasure it is to welcome, in course, Patty and Jason's case is not true, but the fact that Mr. Zola mentioned the word passion. I heard passion, excitement, commitment, a willingness to come in and give of themselves 100% to this district, to the children of the district, and to every colleague that they interact with. And Melissa, you're no exception. The excitement I heard on the phone was genuine. I appreciated that as leader of the school district. And to come into a district with the challenges we have, to be full of excitement and passion in serving in your respective positions is exactly the calling that we need from our people. So, thank you.
So, I just want to say, congratulations, Mr. Williams. I don't know you. I think I do know some of your other family members, but congratulations on your appointment. Congratulations, Melissa. Congratulations, Patty. Welcome to the Hazelton area school district family for you who are new. And we're just really excited about everyone's new positions and moving forward in a positive direction.
If I may, 58 is just a technicality right now that the board and solicitor need to work through. It's just a technicality. I think that, since it's out there, obviously, it's something that's well, well overdue.
We do plan on making Mr. Denotti Assistant Superintendent. We have to work out some bugs. But that is well overdue, and we will congratulate him again because he goes above and beyond every single day for everyone in this district.
And George does like congratulations.
And he does need to be recognized, even though he sits in the back, and he doesn't like it. And I could tell he doesn't like it now, but...
He likes the limelight.
He wholeheartedly gives 110%.
And not that you have bugs, Mr. Denotti. I hope that doesn't go across you. There was some bugs in the paperwork, that's all, right?
Except for calling everybody ma'am.
And Ms. Kay, when that, when and if that's approved, that gives me full authority to use and abuse him more than we're already doing. So, I appreciate that. Would you have one more item on the agenda, actually? That's number 63, recommend board approve the following tenure list.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? Roll call.
Number 63, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Any comments on non-agenda items? Dr. Childs?
Bob Childs, Hazel Township. A brief question. At the time that I left the board, there was discussion, and subsequently, a decision made that lower-level administrators were coming only from this district because they'd put in their time, and they'd gone through the district. Some agreed, some didn't agree with that idea. Is that still, I know you interview more than just people from the district, but is it still an understood situation that if there is anybody who is reasonably qualified, that that person will be taken from this district as opposed to from outside?
I think we have been following that, maybe not intentionally. There's nothing on paper, but I think all of us want to see our own staff succeed first. So, we do look at that. I would like to point out, because I know that something probably will be brought up about Mr. Denotti being Assistant Superintendent, but when you look at the central office side, there are only two people running that department, which was Mr. Denotti and Dr. Butler. We have now decided to move Mr. Denotti up to recognize his commitment to this district and bring on Ms. Galloway because she also has a huge commitment and passion for her students, and she will be a complete asset. So, we're trying to get more help on the superintendent's side because honestly, two people cannot run a district this size.
His hair is getting more gray. But that's, no, I was not making any negative comments about anybody.
No, no, I just wanted to point that out because after I, you know, because everybody's always about, no, we probably, we can't run the district with two people. That's a given.
No, no, again, what I was talking about was your lower-level administrators, the step into administration. And much as I am anxious to promote those who have worked in the district, at the same time, a district that constantly feeds back into itself, ultimately gets no new ideas, and you get no spark and no life, that goes for all, that really actually goes not just for the school district, it goes for most businesses, most whatever. So, I hope that you won't make it an exclusive club that does not accept new ideas and new people.
I don't think we will. I have great faith in Dr. Butler. If he feels that when they screen the applicants, that there is no one that we should move forward, then we would open it up to the outside. That's a given.
And Doc, I think we proved that as a board probably two years ago when we hired our VP at Maple Manor. That gentleman is from out of town, and there were local people that interviewed for that job, along with the person that got the job. So, we're keeping an open mind, I guess, on every position that comes in front of us.
Thank you.
Anyone else have a comment on a non-agenda item?
Motion adjourned.
Second.